The Monday, October 26th, 2015 regular meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners. Begin our meeting with a level of silence. Thank you. Commissioner Federal, would you please?
May I rise for the pledge? Would like to lead this.
Senator.
United States of America, consider it a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business will be to approve the consent agenda and I'll say at the outset, there's two items on here that are resolutions that after we approve the consent agenda, I'll read one and to the record and another person in the audience will read the second one. So we have the minutes from October 12th. We have a resolution honoring veterans. We have a resolution honoring the 20-year service of retiring County Manager Charlie Horne. And we have the finance officer's report, finance report ending 30th September. Any changes, additions, additions to the consent agenda? And the air motion to approve.
Send them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If being opposed, the consent agenda is approved. And I've offered Mr. Hopey Bennett the opportunity to read the resolution for the veterans since he is a 20-year veteran of our armed services. If you will, please.
Mayor Terry, commissioners? Keep an eye on it. A resolution honoring veterans and men and women currently serving in the armed forces of the United States of America. Whereas, the United States of America was founded on principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all. And, whereas, America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to advance our national interests, and to preserve our rights and freedoms. And, whereas, on Veterans' Day, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces, past and present, who have valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history. And, whereas, on Veterans' Day, we also remember and pay tribute to the millions of patriots whose courage and sacrifice have secured our freedom, beginning with those who suffered through the harsh winter at Valley Forge, and up to those who are keeping the peace and defending our values around the globe today. And, whereas, we honor all men and women currently serving in the military for their sacrifices. And, now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize all veterans and the men and women that are currently serving in our armed forces around the world, adopted this, the 26th day of October 2015. Signed, William G. Terry, Mayor. Thank you all.
Yes, sir. And the next resolution that we'll read in the record is the one honoring our retiring County Manager Charlie Horne. A resolution to honor Charlie Horne for his service to Chatham County. Whereas, Mr. Charlie Horne has held the position of County Manager for nearly 20 years. Whereas, Mr. Horne is a dedicated public servant to Chatham County citizens, boards, and staff. And whereas, the town of Pittsburgh benefited from its relationship with Mr. Horne and his exemplary service to Chatham County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the town of Pittsburgh as follows. The town of Pittsburgh hereby commends Charlie Horne and his nearly 20 years of service to Chatham County. A copy of this resolution shall be presented to Mr. Horne, adopted this the 26th day of October 2015.
You know, I might offer one minor modification. Where it says Mr. Horne was a dedicated public servant, I'd like to say that he is and has been. He's still in service.
Which one is?
Second. Second, all right.
Thank you. Okay. And I guess our next order of business would be to approve the remainder of the agenda. The manager tells me that we could have a change. The regular agenda is the item bit pulled.
That would be my recommendation to call the item for the final file approval for the Sullivan.
Okay, and if they have what gets requested. So with that, with that change, any other additions, deletions, modifications to the regular agenda? The air motion to approve with the one change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unopposed, the agenda has amended as it's adopted. Brings us to six matters. We do have some citizens who have asked to be heard. First is Cindy Perry.
Thank you very much. I rise to speak to you tonight with just a bit of disappointment. The races that are being run right now for town board and mayor are nonpartisan races. But you would never know that from what had been happening over the last several weeks. There's been petty, there's been worse than petty, and there's been downright mean. And I rise emotionally given, just because I think that anybody who has the wherewithal to put their name forward for public office is just, ought to be congratulated, ought to be glorified in many senses, and certainly not condemned. I don't name any names. I don't pretend that it's anybody here in this room or whatever, but I'm just making note that this election, this municipal election, seems to have risen to just a very disappointing and sad level of meanness. So as we go forward in the last week and one day, I would just hope that we could come together in a spectacularly new way to say that we think that there isn't a single person among these candidates who wouldn't just do a wonderful job for the town of Pittsburgh. And to say that there is not a single person who's put their name forward that isn't totally dedicated to the town of Pittsburgh and wouldn't do just an excellent job. Thank you.
Next speaker is, and for the record, that was Cindy Perry of 259 Hillsborough Street. Next speaker is Casey Mann.
Good evening. I'm Casey Mann on that 185 Tumor Loop, and I want to start by thanking Cindy for very nice words. I really do appreciate them. I'm here for a different matter. I live on Tumor Loop behind Piggly Wiggly, and my neighbors and I were discussing yesterday, yesterday, there's been a lot of increased traffic on Tumor Loop as of late of folks who don't live in our neighborhood, and there are no posted speed limit signs there. And while typically the folks who live in the neighborhood creep at a very low rate of speed, the folks who are there driving through have been coming at a pretty fast clip, and the kids are actually, they're very, you know, play in the street, there's a lot of concern about their safety. And so I know that typically, it says where no signs are posted, I believe the speed limit is 35, but that would be outrageous in that for anyone who's been on Tumor Loop. 35 is probably an outrageous speed for that particular street. And so I'm simply asking for you to consider asking the police department to make an adjustment to that for Tumor Loop, and perhaps put in some sort of speed controls for the neighborhood. It doesn't have any speed zones right now, but that would be a lovely, lovely thing to do for the children's safety on the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would the board like to receive and refer those comments to the manager and ask that Police Chief and the Public Works Director take a look at that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and that's the end of public comments. If we didn't get to sign up, if we would like to indicate now, see if it ends in the air. Okay. Our business was stretched. We're at two, let's see here, wastewater allocation for a dental office building at 360 West Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Staff on November, or October 9th, received plans for an office building slash dental office, mean 5,228 square feet in size. The advocate, Mark Ashness, the engineer with the CE Group, has submitted for a SOR allocation to the Board for 425 gallons per day and per ordinances and town code. Those allocations come to the Board for approval. I do expect this site plan to be before this Board in December.
Any questions from the Board? We've seen several of these before with the regular team.
I think I will make a motion that we approve it with our standard condition that site plan come before the Board within one year to keep the allocation valid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unopposed, the motion carries and allocation is approved. One thing, can I ask you this? I think I asked it before, and it just didn't seem to happen. I really like this spreadsheet where we keep track of the allocations that we've made over the years, but there's not a remaining balance column anywhere that tells us how much we've allocated and what we think we have. I know that's kind of a floating number. Depends on sometimes the weather and other things, but we have an estimate.
Yeah, we can share that.
Yeah, that'd be useful. Bring us quickly to the manager's updates.
Thank you. I don't want to interrupt the momentum, but I will try to be as complete and informative as I can. As you can see, we have a, we have a screen that I'm looking at right now, and there seems to be a little bit of a lag when I toggle between documents, and I think that's more of an issue with the file structure that I have going. It's connected by HDMI port, so there shouldn't be a problem. But anyway, we'll have obviously this screen right here, and then we have, we have the infrastructure as far as HDMI port and electrical outlet over here on this side, so that we can adjust the screen depending on what kind of crowd we have, and so that I think the Commissioner Turner seat, as we call it, can give maybe a better view too than what she has right now. So anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna work those, couple of those details out, but it's really nice to have projected image on the screen without having to worry about balancing the projector with business cards and napkins and things like that. Plus, we have whole light in the room, so progress, I hope. Other items, unified development ordinance. Clarion Associates are finalizing the draft. It'll have the administrative district abuse regulations in this draft. They'll be meeting with staff, I believe, around the end of this month, and then we're looking to convene the UDO advisory, technical advisory committee in November, and then we're looking to present that, present the draft, then follow that dialogue to the planning board in December, and then I don't know if it's realistic to think that we'll have a Board of Commissioners discussion on the UDO in December, it may be January, before the actual issue gets discussed with the Board of Commissioners. But that remains, remains on task, and we're fortunate to have Rogers' involvement on that. East Street Sidewalk Project, closeout meeting was actually held today, and I believe the last physical items to close out should be wrapped up on Wednesday, and we can get rid of those cones. There's some stabilization, I believe, that happened, the remaining stabilization in the area around the sidewalk, I believe, happened today. There was another storm rain pipe, I think, that had to be put in on the far side over by the credit union to kind of try to keep people out of the hole near the sidewalk, but it looks like folks are using it despite the cones. But it looks like we can get those out of the way here shortly and wrap that project up. As you're probably aware, the water main break project that we had on West Main was repaved last week. It's a nice black landing strip. You gotta kind of look to notice, but believe it or not, that's where a lot of water was breaking through pavement last month. It's my intention, until I hear otherwise from DOT, that we're gonna be probably using Powell Bill funding to make DOT haul on that project. So the roster of streets that we had anticipated using the Powell Bill funding is going to be probably reduced to a portion of Salisbury Street, but we're still finalizing some of the costs on that as well. Commissioner Fiocco, I asked last week about north side water system improvements, the elevated storage tank, and staff's continuing to work with Chatham Parks Engineers on that project, and we're expecting what they call an 80% complete set of plans, which will help us identify cost. And as we get a better idea of cost, we're also going to be plugging that information into some discussion of how the payments, how payment construction management will actually be formalized. And so this is where, this is where it really gets interesting and fun, as far as I'm concerned. As you're aware, the developer is, is going to be paying for the cost of these improvements, and it does appear as if there's going to be some benefit not only to the developer but to our system, our distribution system as a whole as well. So that continues to move forward. Downtown Vision and planning on that front, Kimley Horn has apparently completed the land survey for the improvements that were identified near the traffic circle, and they're going back and forth with DOT. Some technical issues, we should be meeting with Kimley Horn to get an update from them, and then from there, we hope to reach higher with the community and provide an update and seek some additional direction on that front. So planning continues to move forward on that. You guys are probably also familiar, I think we had a presentation for Mr. Royal at the last meeting regarding the project going on, reducing the amount of inflow and infiltration to our wastewater collection system. Obviously, a lot of stormwater has been coming into our system at various points in our collection system. This makes it pretty difficult for us to, when we have significant rainfalls, to treat all of the water, and certainly treating rainwater is very expensive and inefficient. So the smoke testing that we've completed is, on a segment of our system, is trying to identify some areas where we can fix. Some of those possible areas have been blown, it appears as if that has been completed. We're gonna be working with hydrostructures now to let out a contract for the fixed portion of the project. There's some work also that staff can do, our existing utility staff could do, to try to lessen the cost of the project. It does appear as if the work that has been identified at this point in time is under what we had originally been approved for as far as our loan is concerned, but I want to wait a little bit until we have some of those bid documents complete in order to, bid documents complete and let, before I can begin to turn, can turn the final cost of the project. But at this point in time, provided we don't want to expand the scope, we should be able to take care of the areas that we originally identified in the I and I project. And then finally, and strangely enough, this came up in a couple, a couple of communities that I, that I had the pleasure of working in, Halloween hours, for some reason, I used to be a real patron of the city, and I haven't really heard very much about it here, but obviously Halloween is, Halloween is on Saturday this year, and Chief Crutchfield's asking that we try to observe trick or treating between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. on Saturdays. That's essentially, it's kind of cutting it a little bit, maybe a little bit later than you would on a week, on a weekday, but it is Saturday, allows us, I think, a little bit of time to make sure that everybody gets their trick or treating out of their system. We'll have officers stationed in some of the more active neighborhoods. Now, Chatham Forest is a, is a big one, and gets a lot of traffic as well, and so we'll have a lot of activity there and in other areas of town, and we're gonna be ready for that. The street fair, just going off script a little bit, the street, the street fair was held this past Saturday, and I think I saw most of everyone there. It's, I think it was, you know, if I say so, I think it all went pretty well. I think if we had kept it open until dark, people probably would have stayed in the dark. But, but there was a pretty good, steady crowd the entire day. I think it really helps that we've got, we have, you know, we've obviously had a few new staff working at it, but we had a lot of return vendors, which I think is a good sign, and a lot of new vendors, which is a good sign as well. And so especially with return vendors, everybody kind of knew what they had to do and knew their roles and all of that. So we're gonna take a look at some of the stuff we did right, and maybe a few of the things that we need to improve on, and certainly if you guys think that there's any, if you guys have any feedback you want to provide, please feel free to share that with staff, and we're gonna continue to make it, I think, one of the more, one of the more popular events in the area. I remember years past, we always stressed about having the state fair or UNC game on the same weekend. I didn't even think about, I didn't think about either one of those events, except I know John was leaving a little bit earlier to get up to UNC game, so if I had, I would have forgotten that that game was going on.
You stay around here another year until you, you'll know it.
Yeah, well, I've been to a UNC game, that's, that's quite what I'm used to, but that's fine. But anyway, great time had by all, and again, like I said, if you have any feedback, let me know. And then finally, the other thing that I bring up that I think that the Board has asked about in, in recent weeks is with concern to Powell Ploys. We have had a discussion with, with the management development company, and there was a punch list that was shared in May of this year. The, wasn't a heck of a lot of progress. I think there was a little bit initially in terms of identifying the work, after that there wasn't a heck of a lot of progress. The following, the sharing of that information. We followed up with the developer, and the developer got back to us with a timeline that I frankly didn't think was acceptable, and so we revisited that timeline, and, you know, we, I think at the next meeting, we shared something a little bit more firm, but he's skinnying up what he had originally identified, which was, I believe, March of 2016. He can really button up with everything out there, and that's, I guess, to me, seemed a little bit too long based on the amount of timing, they had to deal with some things. So, so we continue to work on that and try to, we're trying to get that project, at least the finished portions of that project, realizing, of course, there are parts of Phase 2 that are still under development right now, there are many other parts that have been completed for quite some time, and frankly, that they're going on too long. And so we continue to work to make sure that those are, are buttoned up as quickly as possible, and that they're being responsive to their requirements. And with that, I would close things out, open it up for any questions coming, concerns you guys might have.
Just a quick comment on Powell Ploys, they, you're right, they were out there early in the springtime marking, you know, failed curbs where, you know, concrete trucks had ran over a curb and broken, and I was encouraged, I thought, well, they're getting ready to come here and cut this out. Didn't, but then they just disappeared, and now we're bucking up against winter months when laying asphalt is not a good idea, so, you know, perhaps that's why they're giving you the May timeframe, because they recognize that asphalt plants are gonna be shut down pretty quick, so.
Yeah, well, it may be, it may be while they, March, I think March of 2016 was kind of when they were dropping that, but it was, it was the drop date on that.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, in North Carolina, it is possible to be paving in March. It's not as possible, and it's not as advisable in January. So I get that part of it, but I think it could, it still could have been done earlier than that.
Well, yeah, it seems like it would, it's gonna be like wasting the entire summer, so I don't have to do those there, but that's, that's done deal now.
Okay, and if I could, if I mention one, I am going to be done Thursday and Friday of next week. Actually, the first time I've visited my hometown since I moved down here, so I'm really kind of looking forward to that. I will be watching the real football, at all times.
Okay. Time's taken.
Okay. Any questions from the manager on any of those updates?
The UDO, when will it be available for public review?
The draft?
Yeah.
The draft would be available for public review at the time, I think, that the technical committee has it available.
Okay, we'll just post it on the web?
We'll post it on the web, and we'll make it, we'll post it on the web at the same time the technical committee has it.
Okay, great.
Okay, let's see here, with respect to mayor updates, I'll just remind everybody that it's probably on your calendars already, but the joint elected officials meeting is coming up in November, it's on the 12th, 7:00 p.m. at the Community College Meeting Room. Let's see, are we able to bring up the UDO updates? Fairgrounds, downtown business association. One comment about the street fair, first of all, it was a fantastic job for the staff this year, I would say that was, I've been to eight of those now, I think that's the best one, and it's a combination of good luck with the weather and good work on the staff's part. That's the biggest street fair I've ever seen. We've, you know, and it ran just many more vendors than I'd ever seen before, and well-run, and I think I enjoyed it. The only critique that I might ask are, something we wanted to look at, is I was watching the police officers trying to force the no dogs law, and I was starting to feel some empathy for them, because there was a pretty steady stream of canines going through there, and people just tend to ignore the signs. And I wonder if maybe we ought to revisit that, I don't know whether, if dogs are a real problem, we should keep them out, but if they're not, I don't know why we burn our police officers with that headache of having to confront people about it and having an angry exchange, and people stomp off and whatnot. So maybe we ought to revisit why, I don't know how long ago we said people can't bring their dogs, or why we said it, but if it's a liability issue, maybe we need to keep doing it. If there's, is no compelling reason, maybe we ought to lift that burden off the police officers, because it just, you know, if you're the guy who's gotta go up and confront people that, you know, you gotta take your dog home to the fair, that's, that's, I don't know, we would put that on the police officers unless it was really absolutely necessary. So that's just a thought about, do we really need to, you know, not, not everybody can bring their dog, it's only a dozen or so few dozen people, and I didn't see any, of course, one incident, one child gets bit, I know that could change people's opinion, but anyway, just some food for thought for next year on the whole no dogs thing.
If you're bringing out all the same, personally, that, that, go to the festival out there, yeah, and it's closer quarters. You have little children running around there. Children like to play with dogs, and then sometimes dogs don't like to play with children.
Yeah, and I know we're leaving, we're assuming people have good sense, and if you got a dog that's snippy or snappy, you're like, kid, you wouldn't bring him, but, you know, you can't always count on people having good sense on that regard.
Well, I think the problem's with the enforcement, really, because it, there's a certain time of the day where people kind of enter the fair from all
Maybe we could ask the chief if he thinks, when he thinks about it, maybe it's not, maybe what I saw wasn't a bigger deal as it looked like to me, but if I was a police officer, that looked like an annoying thing for them to have to worry about. Okay. Any other comments from the manager report? If not, then we go to Commissioner Concerns. Mr. Carroll?
I guess this is a horn in the front side, but I still have some concerns about the sidewalk on the west side. Going by aisles up to the school, have we heard anything else on that from DOT?
Yeah, we are extending, they extended the deadline for us to do that, to give us some time to get that last piece of, of right away.
Okay.
Closing out this project, we're gonna be able to focus, focus more on that.
Okay. I've heard several comments on the nice sidewalk out to the ice plant, but, you know, we need to get back on, into the basics around here.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bulley?
I do have one question, but first I'd like to say the street fair was wonderful. There, this street that is behind Chatham Mills, is that a town street?
Miss Hollywood?
Yeah, it's funny.
Yes.
It's a huge hole in that street, I mean, huge, so if you could.
Behind Chatham?
It's the Sardis Street. Bonnie Street.
So, that hole is at the end of that parking lot, next to their dumpster, that might be their hole.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking the town manager to check, but Mr. Potteek to see if that's actually, that portion comes all the way out and see if that's the town for product. It's a huge.
I think it's a sewer tap that was cut into the road and maybe not patched very well.
I know.
Mr. Turner? Well, that was a speedy meeting. Are there any additional notes for their business that I hear?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.